See headed in as we move forward. Each of those goals has their own set of policies. And because we recognize the interconnected nature of all of these efforts, many of the policies that appear in one goal will appear in others. And so we want to make sure to show that kind of interrelation between the various goals and policies and how each of them plays off the other. The first three goals in the plan are considered cross cutting. So they are to improve transparency and efficiency in governance, create a more sustainable, a more equitable community, and be a leader in climate resilience and climate change. Chapter four is where we think of our, as we're really focused on our long range efforts and vision. So the Pima Association of Governments has told us that there are around 24,000 people who will be moving into the city over the next 10 years. That doesn't include folks who are being born in the city. That doesn't include residents who come from, who stayed from University of Arizona to stay in our community. That doesn't include residents who are transitioning from homelessness into, into housing. So we want to make sure to capture all the needs of our community members and how all these people will need to be home housed, where they will find jobs, where they will be able to find amenities and resources. And so that's largely what chapter four is about. It's trying to create guidance for how we can develop over the next 10 years to accommodate all of that needs while also preserving what makes Tucson Tucson. Chapter five, implementation, really looks at how we try to reconcile such the, the broad goals and objectives of the general plan. And by focusing them into the functional and specific plans that are, that are in existence throughout the city. So we focus on how we work to merge our policies to those existing plans and where they, and where each of those helps to implement all the different goals of the plan. It also includes a list of near, mid and long term projects of the next 10 years. So we have some lighthouse beacons for showing where projects, where progress will occur over the next 10 years in a more concrete fashion. And when we took this to the public in December of, of last year, it was just for the holidays. So we really just wanted, we held an open house and a launch party to let people know that the draft was live and it was public and that we would come back in the, in the beginning of January to really engage with people. So they'd have time to think over the holidays and enjoy, enjoy themselves and then come back fresh to think about like what we wanted to see in, in another draft and what we got right, what we need to change. So we held four in-person feedback forums across the city, two virtual sessions. We met with 12 different boards and commissions, three neighborhood associations, three community investment groups and two different, and two different stakeholder, developer stakeholder meetings to talk to people about the, the permanent draft and what was in it and to solicit feedback. We also online received 74 individual surveys. And we had a tool called meeting in a box, which allowed residents to host their own meeting and give us feedback similar to what we were presenting in our in-person forums. And so we got three of those meeting in box backs. All totaled in a month, we received 827 comments. The majority of those comments were in chapters three and four, which is not surprising. But we received comments on all, on all aspects of the plan, which we wanted to help incorporate into a new draft. So some of those changes that we can, that you, that we see in the revised draft, 44 of the different policies were revised, along with 19 changes to development guidelines in chapter four. We added six additional context layers to all of our maps in the plan, showing things relating to other municipalities, where Davis-Monthan is, just to get better context to where development, where different features were in our city. We also include four different appendixes, including an ARS matrix, showing how we meet the goals and objectives of the general plan, a goals and policy list, which is a quicker go-to of all the different goals and policies, as well as a history section for a focus in on how Lakay and the, and our community downtown faced urban renewal through, in the, in the past and how is that, and how the TCC was built. That's kind of a lessons learned section. So we provide the contents, the content in the general plan. We also created an executive summary of the total plan for people who wanted to get a more out of glance appreciation of it or to be able to adjust it a little easier before diving into the full document. We heard a lot from public, uh, public feedback saying that it was a lot of information. So we found a way to condense that too. Um, so about some of the expanded content that we, that we saw on the plan, folks told us that we want to see additional information on how housing projections and how our, and how our population projections were incorporated and where that data was, how that data was informing our projections for our future growth. So we included additional language on that and how that reached and how that, where those resources came from and how that research impacted our decision-making. Uh, we included additional language on Tucson's history. People said we should talk more about the U of A as an important part of our community. Past planning efforts, including what our first comprehensive plan was and the successive actions that created our, our current one. We also heard that we want, it was too rose colored. It seemed like too much of a, of a brochure for what is good about Tucson. So in our current conditions sections, we added a challenges portion, talking about some of the issues we face, including our roads, our increasing, our increasing population of the unhoused, as well as some of the issues with dealing with water and climate issues. And how those have continued, extreme heat has been a continuing issue in our community. Some of the new policies that appeared in the plan, this is just an example of some of those. There were about 10 altogether, but these are examples of some of the ones that were, that were added into the plan based on public feedback received from different forums, as well as working with different boards and commissions and departments in the city to craft the language to make sure that it was going to be something that was both achievable and within the scope of the, of the city to be able to implement these, these policies. Revisions to policies included things like adapting the language to make sure it was inclusive and intentional of folks, of residents who are residents with disabilities, as well as providing additional accommodations for our elderly and folks, uh, folks who can't drive, so the, and youth as well. So universal design was incorporated more, more specifically into revised language. That would, that came across both in policies for environment as well as for transportation. We also made sure that we were including language that would focus on how we can better implement and enforce things like our outdoor lighting code. We heard from the, a few community members that that was a really important issue to them. And so we've adopted our language to be stronger there. Uh, and then again, just making sure that we are talking about how we will implement things. So where we will, uh, how we will change, change public safety, what, what features of design are important throughout the community. And that occurred both in, again, policies for environmental and ecology goals, as well as for transportation. And for our future growth scenario map, we received almost 200 comments from the public on if, on what changes or what, what additions they'd like to see to our future growth scenario map. The question we asked folks was, does this reflect the community you want to see? And the vast majority of the comments received actually were, yes, this is, we feel that this is a good representation of our community. Where changes were, were requested or we did see suggestions for changes were kind of in this south and southeast, southwest portion of town in these areas here. So you'll notice that we reduced the intensity along Valencia, where there was a mixed use corridor, a mixed use corridor zone or a building block. We've removed that from feedback we got from the Tucson Airport Authority that it was within their flight path. Uh, we increased intensity and added an extended neighborhood community center and neighborhood corridor on the west side, based on feedback we had from since Ward one. We reduced this, the intensity along 22nd to better reflect existing conditions and few area plans and comments from neighbors and neighbors in that area. And for our building, and again, the future growth scenario map, all those different colors you see are building blocks. So they're future, they're future land uses. They're intended to guide the kinds of development that you see in different parts of the city. Uh, so they encourage multiple, they encourage or discourage various zoning districts and types of development. And for each of those building blocks comes an additional set of development guidelines that can better provide context for what kind of growth you want to see in each of these parts of the city. And so comments we got from folks that we wanted to see is better guidance for all, for all parts of the city. We're to see again, to incorporate better aspects of the universal design and make sure that we are being more, more insistent on ADA accommodations and provide that guidance, that we are being supportive of implementing and enforcing our, our outdoor lighting code. Uh, and that we are also making sure that we're thinking about resiliency in a more, more intentional way. So what are next steps? We have this public hearing today, which again, thank you all so much for being here for this one as our first public hearing to talk about this. But we have another one on the 19th, where hopefully we will look at the public and ask for recommendation for approval or disapproval to go to mayor and council. We are intending in April to go to mayor and council with a study session to ask them to put this on the ballot to be timelines that, that make sure it's, it'll be on the ballot for November. Uh, and in the meantime, we will be at a number of community events, talking to folks about this plan. Make sure that we continue to raise awareness of it. So we'll be at the Festival of Books this weekend. If y'all aren't, if y'all aren't going, you should go. It's gonna be fun. Diadeninias, C. Clovi are also happening in mid, in mid and late April. And Tucson, meet yourself in the summer. Uh, and then in May of this year, we'll go to mayor and council for their public hearing for final adoption and approval of the plan before it goes to the ballot in November. Uh, and that's my show. And with that, I'm open to any questions y'all may have.
Excellent. Um, I can open this up for any questions from the commission. Yes, Commissioner McKenzie.
Uh, thank you for that presentation. Was, were you, do you have any sense of how the metrics of engagement with our planning process sort of compares with some of the other larger cities in, in Arizona, who also have to do, are required by the state to do these plans? Have you had any sense of like how ours, you know, were they, they comparable, better, worse, or anything like that?
I don't want to say better or worse, but we've actually been in communication with the, with the planners, our counterparts in Phoenix, Tempe and Mesa's, they've just, they've actually just finished their process in Tempe and, uh, Tempe and Phoenix. Flagstaff is still in the, is a little further behind us. We've been talking with them. And then with the, our surrounding communities in Oro Valley and Sarita, we actually met with them to see what their engagement process has been like. And so we're all using very similar strategies as far as the platforms for engagement, public hearings, social media, listservs. We're also, a lot of, a lot of them have a similar strategy of trying to work with specific community groups, be it neighborhood associations or different community stakeholders to get them to bring their constituencies out, to be involved in the process. I'd say what Tucson does, you know, I think puts more emphasis into is follow-up. Uh, so I think that we've done a good job of building relationships with folks who have come out to our meetings and our working group members to make sure that they continue to stay engaged and that we follow up to see like, was this indeed what you had said? We feel confident that we are reflective of the comments that we've received so far, that this is actually what we've heard from the public.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Small.
If I heard you correctly, so it goes to mayor and council in May and then in, in November to an actual citywide vote? Okay. How do you, how do you condense 391 pages of, of all this information and graphics into a black and white thing that, that people will fill out the box, yes or no?
That's it. So that's a, we've created our, our executive summary, which is, I believe, 10 pages total. That gives a brief summary of each chapter. What are the important aspects of the, of each and the meat of the goals and policies in our future growth scenario? To show like, these are the guiding principles that we are hoping that will carry us forward in the next 10 years. So we've created that executive summary and we hope that folks can, you know, that's also a document that people can give us feedback on it. If there's something that's not clear in that, we can create a revised version of that as well. But that's been our answer to that question is to create something that we can hand out, which we'll be handing out at the Festival of Book this weekend, if you can catch.
And Commissioner Small, just to kind of point out as well, there's going to be a pretty large kind of outreach effort that occurs after this is adopted by the council. So between May and November, um, we'll be doing informational outreach to kind of make people aware of Plan Tucson. So instead of seeing, you know, when they see that, you know, small box or whatever with this description, they're like, oh, you know, I've seen this or there was a pop-up at that Safeway when I was there or something of that sort. So it's really making sure that people are aware of it ahead of time. So when they see the ballot, they know what they're, what they're looking at.
Well, then if, so then if it is part of a public vote, what happens in the unlikely scenario where the public votes against it?
Yes. So in that scenario, we are required by law to have a general plan. Plan. So we will default to the 2013 plan, which is a fine document, but is 10 years old and does not include nearly half of the data or necessarily the same objectives that we feel that the community has told us about today.
And will that be?
We would start, you know, we would regroup and look at what would be a new process to develop and update and really try to hear from the community of what did, what was not in the plan that they wanted to see or things that were in the plan that our community did not support. That has happened in a few communities in Arizona over the years. And we really look at those for lessons learned and examples of best practices. Like Dan was saying, really what we've found is in some communities, in some communities, there was actual objections to a plan. That's why it hasn't been adopted. But in some cases, um, what we have heard is that, um, folks just didn't know what it was. And if they didn't know what it was, they weren't going to vote for it. So that's why the education outreach is going to be so important through the summer and early fall ahead of that election.
So part of the language in that, you know, yes or no voting will say, if you vote no on this, we're going to go 12 years back into the past. Right?
Yeah, that's a good way to put it.
That's a paraphrase, but.
Yeah. And we'll be working on that language and what that, we have to develop the ballot language. That is very clear and concise. So that's something that we will be working on.
Thank you.
I, I see two questions online. Sorry, Commissioner Lampeau. I do not see which commissioners they are, but. Okay, I'll go ahead and call in Commissioners Aguirre.
Hi, um, I'd like a, um, a little clarification, clarification of what Commissioner McKenzie asked as far as the metrics of engagement. I'm not sure if I understood the question or the answer is when I heard metrics, I was wondering, um, is when we compare ourselves to other communities as far as, do you have, um, information on the amount of responses per capita of the communities as compared with ours? Did we get enough responses? I know we're a large community and, you know, a lot of people didn't, most of the community did not respond to this is, I'm not sure. I'm pretty sure that's not due to outreach because the city of Tucson is pretty good about that. But, um, um, did other communities in Arizona, um, have the same type of response from their citizens?
Commissioner, I don't have the numbers for, if our peers found similar per capita number, a number of responses. I know that in their plans, like when, in discussion with them, that they were, they, they had similar rooms of people. So like we held, uh, community forums that hosted between 30 and 50 individuals or, you know, sometimes the lowest 10, sometimes, sometimes highs 50. And when we spoke with our peers in Tempe or in, uh, Oro Valley, they were getting roughly some, some roughly similar rooms of audience attendance. I don't have the numbers right now to tell you though, if that was, like, if they overall had a higher per capita or not. But just in the methods of outreach and in the overall response, we were similar.
Commissioners Aguirre, we're happy to take a look at some of those numbers and bring those to you next week when we meet, um, just so you have those as well.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. I have one more commissioner online whose name I cannot see. Just see a hand up. Oh, Commissioner Lane. Commissioner Lane.
Hi, I don't have a question, but I'll just, going back to the commentary, um, a couple ago. I think it's really important when reaching out and doing, um, I guess, the public education piece to help them understand what, how the different departments within the city interact with the document and what they use it for, um, and being very clear and simple about, um, about that. I mean, the idea of going back to 2013 sounds awful and you can say that. But again, like reminding them how each department is responsible to this document, I think would be a good inclusion.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Lampeau.
So I just wanted to say, still, great job, great looking document, uh, very clean, very easy to understand. My only issue is that some of the goals, I just wish that they had more teeth. I, you know, there's no action items. It seems like, and the one that caught my attention was environment seven, collaborate with relevant government agencies, implement a comprehensive strategy for brownfield and superhons site assessment mitigation redevelopment, which is great. Where's the funding for that? What's a specific program that we could implement? Is there, is there a plan that we could put together? It seems like we should have just gone one step further with some action items. That was the only real concern that I had looking through this. Uh, I will say Sierra Vista is, I think, the latest general plan to fail. So looking into that, the first thought that I had was it looks like they didn't do a very good job of public outreach. That was right off the bat. That's what it looked like from what I've seen. That's not the case here. Good job.
All right. Um, so just a quick follow-up. I, I think the, uh, you know, the general plan document is a guiding document. It's not getting into the meat and potatoes and the details of it. And so, you know, I think there's something to, to say about overarching goals and policies here. One of the questions that I had, and honestly, this is more out of just, uh, from a professional point of view is just totally impressed with the outreach that you guys have done and wanting to learn a little bit more about meeting in a box, just the technology and the different advancements and things that are at our fingertips nowadays. If you could explain that a little bit more.
Sure. Um, so we were fortunate enough, Southwest Decision Resources, our consultant for engagement. And they actually, I guess, had helped us to figure out how that tool would work. But the principle of it is that, you know, not everyone's going to be able to come to the meetings that we host. So how can we get as apples to apples, the kind of material that we would present? And then this, and then ask the same kind of questions in any of those. So the documents that you received in the meeting in a box were online. And then we also made sure to create printed copies of them that were hosted each to ward offices, those that were better off with an analog version. But it essentially included a list of the questions that we asked at each of the, each of our in-person or virtual feedback forums. So we asked the same questions that for each of the chapters and those same questions were then asked, uh, in the meeting in the box. And then they also had the same materials, which was the permanent draft plan itself. Uh, and then we had instructions for roles. So they pick a facilitator, a note taker, and then each of those had their own set of queries for how they would set up the need to ask questions and to read sections in the plan. And it was tailored to where they could, if they were trying to get in-depth really into it, there was extra instructions for, say, read this section's first, pause, have conversation. Or if they wanted to speed through it a little faster, you know, pick this sec, you know, go to this page and read this bit to this bit, these are the policies and ask just two questions instead. So we had different levels of meeting a box that they could do. And we created, uh, two of them overall, one for chapters, chapter three and one for chapter four, that could go over, you know, whether they were focusing on future development or our goals and policies.
So this was a kind of an optional, community guided, community, like people from the community are doing this for themselves to. And what was the, how do they give that information back to the PDSD to, so what they learned?
Our instructions were then to, after they've filled out their documents in a PDF, they email it back to us, uh, or if they were analog version, they, they could be dropped off here and then the ward offices would tell us if they had materials picked up. Total, all totaled, we heard, we heard back from the coalition of, uh, Sonoran Desert, the Sonoran Desert Coalition, one U of A group and one neighborhood association, all dropped boxes back to us.
Oh, I think it's a really interesting and creative outreach method. Yeah, it's tough. I get it. And so being creative is, it's great. Thank you. Commissioner McKenzie.
Yeah, just to build on Commissioner Lampeau's comment, I attended several of the, uh, you know, working group, uh, events for the Plan Tucson. And many of the people at the tables I was sitting at and, you know, listening to online echoed Lampeau's, uh, Christian Lampeau's, uh, comments about a little more meat, as did I, reiterated many times. But, you know, I've come to realize that Plan Tucson is really more of a vision document. And, you know, it's maybe erroneous to call it an actual plan. You know, I always think of, you know, a vision without a plan is a dream and a plan without a vision is a nightmare. This is a, this is a vision document. It doesn't really have a detailed meat and potatoes plan, although it does have the other plans attached to it. Right? So that's part of that. So anyway, uh, other people did have that comment.
Uh, I think that was the number one comment received for feedback in our implementation chapter is, what can you do to strengthen this up? How can we get more precise things? And that is just it, you know? So we tried our best to really not only just say that we were linking it to this, to the functional plans, but provide more guidance on how they were going to reach into the specific plans. So one of the things that's in the revised draft that was not implemented is a set of implementation guidelines. So we're trying to create processes for us to have more continuous reach out with the different departments. So we're seeing how they're going to use their existing, their existing functional plans through the context of the general plan, which policies are they using more frequently? Which processes are they, are they using with guidance from the general plan and kind of build off of that? And then our hope is that once we have the final draft of a plan, we're working on making it a web, uh, more of a web version of a plan than just the, the paper version, which will include an opportunity for us to have more updated metrics. So we can have things, all, our department has a dashboard for, for permit processing. A lot of other departments have their own dashboards covering various processes and, and features. We have to be able to centralize and gather some of those so we can kind of see here's how we're making progress on various things. Uh, and it'll be a way for us to kind of track it that way as well.
I guess I would just urge that in the rollout for the, towards the election or the, uh, the approval vote, that, uh, you know, we emphasize or the city emphasizes that, you know, this is more of a vision document, an actual plan with concrete steps. And I think that will help the approval process, at least with people like Commissioner Lampeau and me, who love to see these kinds of things in the document.
That's good. Thank you.
More thing too. And not some self-tuting, uh, but I'm going to toot a little bit. I've written comprehensive general plans for municipalities, for counties, for tribal governments. And the actions are really like the meat of the document. So when I see a goal that's very vague, you know, I guess it's probably coming out of state statutes that it's not really something that's fully, you know, but we could have gone one extra step and provided funding sources and said, here's what we can do. Here's how we get the money to do it. Let's do it.
Commissioner Small.
I'm, I'm kind of there with these commissioners too, in, in the curiosity of the, the teeth argument. So once, once this gets, um, a, a, you know, voted in by the public, which, which we know will happen in November, right? What, what is the, the filter that this document provides that, um, between action and implementation, you know, just, just for instance, if Goal Five Housing Neighborhood Preservation, which as we know is sort of a metamorphosis thing, right? We, we all think neighborhood preservation is good, but, but there's no real definition of it here. And so if, if a neighborhood thinks somebody's not doing a good job of preservation, is, is it a legal enough document that they can go back and they can say, well, Goal Five Housing Point Five says neighborhood preservation and what does that mean to the people who are trying to preserve their neighborhood?
Sure. Uh, I would say, so that's actually a, a large intent is that we want to be a, a document that's used. So we, uh, a part of the outreach that we've done with folks is how you, how you can use the general plan once, once it's passed. And so we want to make it readable and so it has easy accessibility. So they'd be able to be the ones to advocate for whether or not it's actually preserving enough or, or doing, or not, or doing too much. And so it's, it's, it does have that flexibility built into where people can differ on it. The flexibility is intentional in that we don't have such a strict definition of, of one thing or another that way. If there is, if it's not helpful to the city in the next six years or, you know, six years down the road, that is, the plan is still relevant and that they can use it. But we have a general guide, a general guidance for where, for restructuring that is to preserve.
Well, understanding the generals, you start getting yourselves in trouble if you start being too specific about.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. But I do think in our glossary, we have, I think neighborhood preservation actually is defined. So I'll have to, I'll double check on that. But I think in our glossary, we actually have a definition for that.
Um, commissioners, I would also just add that in terms of the action items, a lot of that is provided by the specific topic-based plans that mayor and council direct staff and various departments to complete. And that really then become the roadmap for action implementation. But those are usually based on general plan goals. So mayor and council can look to the general plan for goals around housing and then say to our housing and community development department, develop really the housing action plan. And that's exactly what they've done over the past 10 years. It's created things like the housing affordability strategy for Tucson, our Move Tucson Transportation Plan, our Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, One Water Plan. And all of those were based on general plan policies at a high level. And then they created more detailed action plans and implementation plans on those topic areas. And it's kind of a, a cycle because then we include and integrate those more detailed policy or policy that's really evolved in the past 10 years in those topic areas into the general plan. And then again, it kind of cycles around again for the next 10 years. We expect a lot of those more specific plans to get updated, which will then influence the next version of Plan Tucson, we hope, in 10 years. So I would say those are really where we find the action items is in plans like the housing affordability strategy, Move Tucson, et cetera.
Would you call the functional plans, right?
Functional plans, yes.
I would just like to add to that too, that, uh, funding is elusive. Funding, funding is, is hard to find. Funding is hard to find, and when it becomes available, you jump on it. And so identifying something in a document and then being held to that is very hard, because it's in the document, right? So you don't want to constrict yourself too much to that point. And so it's, again, this is a document that's guiding, it's general. It's making sure that we are following the roadmap that we want to be ourselves in 20 years. So, you know, that's what the functional plans are for. And when funding becomes available, jump. And that's not always easy to come by, as we just learned last night. Anyway, any further questions online from the commission house? Seeing none, I'd go ahead and like to open this up to a public hearing, to members of the public who would like to speak about this item. In general, there's a three to five-minute time limit per speaker. We'd like to ask that you clearly state your name and address before speaking. And members of the commission may ask questions of the speakers. But we do ask that each speaker be timely, because we want to make sure that all those who would like to be heard have an opportunity. We've had one request to speak ahead at this time, and I will begin by calling them. Malini Roy?
Good evening.
Commissioners?
Yes, she is.
Can you hear me? Yes. Good evening, I'm Dr. Malini Roy. I'm a postdoctoral research associate at the University of Arizona in the College of Architecture, Planning and Landscape Architecture. I'm funded through the Department of Energy's Southwest Urban Corridor Integrated Fields Laboratory. And I work with Dr. Lad Keith, also in the same college. We have a team of graduate and undergraduate students working on the project evaluating plans across Arizona based on criteria for good climate and heat planning. We were very happy to provide feedback to the planning staff on Plan Tucson's recent update. This included evaluating the draft's goals, fact-based strategies, implementation based on extreme heat and climate action best practices. Dr. Keith and I also co-taught a class on public participation and dispute resolution last fall, where students had the opportunity to facilitate and serve as note takers during the community engagement phases. Students also ran a meeting in a box to engage other students in the college. We really appreciate our partnership with the City of Tucson and being able to support a robust planning process and high-quality evidence-based planned content. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next I'd like to call virtually Stephen Brigham.
I have a question of the last speaker.
Okay, thank you. I did not see you, Commissioners of the year.
Well, I lost my buttons, that was my fault. Dr. Roy, I was wondering, you provided that information to the city, and we appreciate all the hard work. And thank you and the department and your students. Is that report available to the commissioners and the information you found out?
I believe planners can also have their input on this.
Someone from the City of Tucson, is this information, the information they collected, available?
And yes, we have a copy of that. I'll double check, I'll double check, we can follow up with Dr. Roy and make sure that we can get you a copy though.
All right, thank you very much.
Excellent. Okay, I'd like to call Stephen Brigham.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Steve Brigham, and I've spent most of my career as a planner, architect for the university, and then with University Medical Center and Banner. So at the risk of getting into some of the weeds that you were talking about and the debate between plan versus vision, I want to get into a little bit of the weeds, and I hope you'll call John Schwartz after me, because we are here together to talk about the impact of utility planning as it affects neighborhoods. And I will just say that in the document, I really applaud you on the outreach efforts. And Goals 13 regarding transportation and 14 regarding vibrant communities are so important. But the recent phenomena of utilities severely impacting a lot of our neighborhoods is really, really important. And I know that you can, that we can all get into some of the weeds by getting into too much detail. But right now, the Tucson City Code, particularly Section 25-82, gives a priority to utilities to approve, for example, underground utility districts. And it's so important that we have a collaborative approach with our utilities and that we work together and not necessarily be overridden by some of the utilities that are really significantly impacting our streets, our neighborhoods in terms of scale, these industrial poles. And that at the ground level, particularly here in Rito Bend, you know, the damage has been done. You've been reading about the effort to try to underground utilities around the university area. The damage in our neighborhood is we can't see around these poles, get out onto streets. We've been trying to plan for sidewalks on Prince Road, for example. And all of a sudden, these poles just land in areas where we were hoping to have sidewalks. So it's an important issue. The collaborative nature of it is important. And I fully understand and respect the difficulty of getting into some of these details. But if you could just make sure that Goals 13 and 14 really address this opportunity that we have through Plan Tucson to work collaboratively with our utilities and not find out about a pole being driven into our neighborhood after the fact. Because they don't talk to us. And I suspect that they don't always talk to the City of Tucson when they're doing their planning. So thank you. And if you could call John Schwartz after, he has some of the detail that we're here together to talk about. Thank you for the opportunity.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Brigham. Next, I would like to call John Schwartz.
Yeah, hi. So my name is John Schwartz. I live at 3720 North Camino Lea Maria in Tucson. And I'm a member of the Steering Committee of the Tucson Neighborhood Undergrounding Coalition. We represent the neighborhoods of 25,000 Tucsonans as well as businesses and organizations in those neighborhoods. And I'd like to read a statement. "A growing jungle-like plethora of large utility poles all over Tucson has developed during the past several decades. These thousands of tall poles and lines have created a mounting feeling among Tucsonans that our city has the increasing look of an industrial site. The poles also block or hinder traffic visibility sightlines at quite a few corners. Plus sidewalks for pedestrians, at least most of them, are not designed to accommodate the mass of poles. With its Midtown Reliability Project, TEP has made clear its staunch, almost crazed opposition to undergrounding transmission lines. And they are planning many new projects through the city involving scores more miles of tall poles and lines in the future. Right now, Plan Tucson says very little about undergrounding utilities, whether newly constructed or already constructed, meaning that the proliferation of tall poles and lines will only continue and get even worse. That'll be the case both along our major streets and within our neighborhoods. In its transportation and/or land-use sections, Plan Tucson should be calling upon the city to get this problem under control. On behalf of all the neighborhoods we represent and the residents, businesses, and organizations in them, I ask you to do so. There are a number of guidelines to this effect regarding Tucson's landscapes that could be placed within either of the two sections of the plan. We can submit some examples in writing to you for you to consider or to propose alternatives to them. We hope that you will be responsive, and we thank you for your consideration. Thank you so much."
Next up, I have Gordon Fuller.
Greetings, I'm Gordon Fuller, 880 East Broadway Boulevard. I'm a futurist. I'm also the president emeritus of the American Renewable Energy Institute. I'm a blind person and a disability advocate. I serve on the Arizona Broadband Task Force. And what I think of when I think of the future is that I'm always excited to imagine what that might be like. It's actually my work, so it's a good thing. But as it happens, being particularly challenged as a blind person and being highly aware of the nature and state of technology and innovation and of the limited fear in which we live on our beautiful planet, my concerns for the future require me to report that there's vast and great changes coming to us all. As we've seen in the past with the pandemic, trade routes can collapse, all these things can affect us. The energy situation for our town is a question of survival ultimately. I've proposed in recent, last January, a year ago, that we cover the streets with solar panels. And we use those to power an electric transit infrastructure, which could power every home. Instead of burning coal up in four corners, we could actually power our own city. And if everyone had an electric vehicle, we could power those as well. We could have enough power and energy that it could very much affect the future economic vitality of our community. What's more, we could convert a lot of the space we now use for parking and other useless kinds of applications to the automotive system we've built. We could use them for greenhouses, agro voltaics, we'll need that. Because again, with climate change and disasters being seen around the world, it's clear, we can't really predict what's going to happen. But I'll leave you with indeed a prediction. There is a new technology, 6G, which isn't just another telecommunications company, a marketing ploy. It's actually a revolutionary change in the way we communicate and connect. I've always been finding it unfortunate that the cloud is where we go to connect and find information. My town, where I live, is a fascinating and diverse place. And in that sense, I want to preserve that, I want to embrace that. I'd like to have a society that can give us all the access to the knowledge and information about our community, when and where we need it, in the form we need it in. And that's very possible, but it'll take us doing it. Big corporations are not our friends, they have nothing of our interest in their hearts. And we need to kind of create the homebrew around this sort of thing. We're a science, research, technology, community, our state is gifted with those tools. It's the kind of thing we need to embrace now to find our own and define our own future. And on that note, I'll just say this planning process, which is wonderful, and I salute you for it, will be much more dynamic in five years, in the sense that it'll be an AI that'll encompass every one of us and all of our opinions, all of our ideas, all of the research papers, cross-reference and indexing to it all. And then we can all contribute and be part of a collaborative process by which the future shapes itself, taking leads from our citizens. So thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I look very forward to tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Like to provide a little bit more time for anyone else who'd like to speak from the public?
Yes, my name's Tom Addyng. My wife, Joel, and I have been living in Tucson this time for just about eight years. Live in the lakes of Castle Rock.
Do you mind please stating your address, please?
Yes, the address is 2449 North Lightning A Drive. They're in northeast Tucson. I've met a couple of times with your speaker here, defining the program. He came to our Bear Canyon Neighborhood Association annual meeting, presented there. And then my colleagues in the Tankaverty Valley Association, and I met with them again. I've enjoyed some of the comments in here, and some of you, especially you, when you talk about a vision document, that's the first thing I think of, I see, I hear the Plan Tucson. All right, and so the plan is, what's the plan for? Who's the plan for? And when I look at a Plan Tucson, I'm thinking, all right, what's the vision first? Because you have a plan, you better have a vision as to what you want. And so those are the first questions I ask, what is it, what is it for? And typically, when I'm talking about a vision, and I'm looking about the communication, and you talked about that upfront, my first thought was, I've not seen this addressed in the media at all. And I would immediately ask, how would I tell the story? If I had a television reporter came and asked me as a developer of this, what is Plan Tucson, and what is it for? And you got 30 seconds on both lines, better have that story. And I heard that. I read the Plan Tucson document, the very first chapter that I looked at, and that's what I shared, that this information is, what's the vision? What is it for? And here are the questions that just immediately came to mind, what draws people to Tucson? What's their vision for Tucson? And when I thought about that, I said, what do people come to Tucson for? It's the World National Monument, Desert Museum, the rodeo, Tour de Tucson, Mount Lemon, To Be in a Canyon, all the types of things that you think of. And then there's, why do people come to Tucson and not Phoenix? Or not to the others? You know, are the people looking for Tucson to be LA West, Phoenix South? And the answer is, I don't think so. What's unique about it? What do you want to keep? What do you want to change? And those are all the types of things that I would expect in the first part of that, so that you can draw attention. It's right now, I don't see you drawing a lot of attention across the board where you can communicate, or else you would have it on the television stations and tell that story. And so what draws people, those things there, guidance for whom, by whom. And then if you're going to do metrics and compare yourself to other cities, I would compare and contrast. What do you think you're doing better than them? What do you think you're doing worse? Learn and compare and contrast is right. I heard a comment about different departments working together on this. So I hear, I get a sense of, this is really a document more for city plans as opposed to the community that they're planning for. And I think you want to have both. But right now, when you have a plan, if you've got 14 goals, you know, I'm a man of faith, and I think of, all right, Jesus only had 12 disciples, why would you have more than 12 goals? It just gets to be too much and will overwhelm other people. Take something that's manageable, and it'll be much more effective. Right now, it's too long, it doesn't have a really good, hard start, you got to have that kick. My advice to them then was, get with the mayor and the staff, and what is their vision for Tucson? And let's get the smaller group and then try to sell that. You get the vision sold, the rest of it will start going. And lastly, encourage you, and I was encouraged by the futurists who just spoke. I enjoyed that, I'm a scientist, I'm an engineer. I worked in a visionary program in 1993 called Spacecast 2020, which at that time, we tried to envision, what would space look like in the year 2020? And we got some of it right. We had folks like Arthur C. Clark, who's still alive, and spoke to us over a video teleconference. We had people like Edward Teller, we had folks from all walks of life. But get some of the futurists and try to think of those things and make it exciting, so people will draw people onto you. Thank you for your time tonight.
Yes, sir.
To the left, thank you.
My name is Vanya Fletcher, 8191 East
My name is Vanya Fletcher, eight one nine one East Danielle Lane. Recently retired city planning long range. And currently actually attending climate change class with Dr. Led Keys and Dr. Roy. I have participated in the last Plan Tucson. I was a stakeholder on this one. I had concerns. I'm still having concerns. While most people don't understand, you know very well that the general plan or comprehensive plan or whatever you want to call it is utilized by us planners in order to provide reports to commissions and city council regarding potential redevelopment. Language is important. And while I went through the plan, the draft, I also have to remind you that resilience together does not deal with urban heat island impacts. There's almost nothing there. One little quote by Dr. Andrew Comrie, who has been doing temperature readings on urban heat island in Tucson since the nineteen eighties. So my issue, and it has been for a while, is language. This is the standard language on the draft for urban heat island, whether it's in climate or land use. Support and expand opportunities for well-maintained, water-efficient urban green spaces and vegetations in new development or redevelopment to mitigate the urban heat island effect. As a planner, support and expand opportunities means nothing. Where's the metric? Understand that in urban heat island, the two main causes are human man-made. The decrease in the urban cooling of trees and vegetation and green spaces and the increase in heat generated by buildings. In fact, if you look, even to my surprise, I found out that transportation is only second in greenhouse in greenhouse gases. Housing, buildings, structures, industries are the main. I was shocked myself. I thought transportation was it, you know, all these cars going by. No, they're buildings. So with the changes to infill and just for disclosure, I wrote the downtown code for Phoenix. And I had to redo the light rail walkable urban code, the I used to call it Wookiee. Very ugly and hairy. So I am used to dealing with the impacts that heat really gives. So to me, this kind of support opportunities, what does that tell me as a planner? How can I come to you? And say, look, you are replacing a fifteen hundred square foot, I don't know, mid-century modern little house on your infill with a five-story building, which is going to, you know, generate tons of heat, greenhouse gases. And you are providing me with enough set on the cooling and greenhouse gas eating of trees. Maybe for three trees? That is my concern, especially when it comes to rezonings. There has to be a better language. There has to be something that talks to us planners, our residents, that incorporating not supporting opportunities, that incorporating green spaces to mitigate the impacts, especially in larger developments, is a necessity. You don't have time. This is it, ten years. There was more basic information in the last one because we were just beginning. We did not know how bad the situation is going to go. And remember, resilient together does not deal with urban heat island. In fact, Hapold didn't even talk about the fact that we had expanded the evening heat, which is perhaps the worst of our impacts from urban heat island. Trees require cooling period during the evening to survive. They don't get that or additional irrigation. I would call it emergency irrigation. In some areas, you might have to consider that. Otherwise, the loss of trees might be too great to bear. Especially in terms of having them grow again to a level that you would be happy with. So think about urban heat island. The causes are pretty much human made. Bigger buildings, more heat energy and carbon put into the air and reduction of green. And as Mr. Aden spoke so eloquently, the beautiful vision for this town and our mission has always been what Tucson represents. Why should anybody come in if we end up looking like Phoenix? We are Tucsonans. We are the old pueblo. Please remember that. As it is, there is a development, forgive me, Mr. Aden, but there is a development right now in the works. Doesn't even benefit the city because there are no more taxes on rentals. Where a developer wants to raise flood plain and put a whole bunch of casitas in there. If we cannot hold on to what we have right now and the beliefs of protecting this town and creating the best environment for all of us. If we can't even deal with somebody wants to build on a flood plain, how can I trust that this language will protect our communities, especially low income, where there's a lot less opportunity for someone to buy trees and plant it in their backyard because they cannot afford to. So please think about that. It's appreciated. Thank you.
Do I see anybody else from the public who'd like to speak? Anybody else online? Everyone has had a chance to speak. I'm going to go ahead and request a motion to close the public hearing this evening.
So moved.
So moved.
They continue.
Well, move. Give me a thumbs up.
Steph?
Oh yeah, I think we need to continue the public hearing.
Oh, because the next, have a second day.
Because it's the second day. Yeah.
One public hearing over two days.
This is session of the public hearing. Yeah.
Doesn't, doesn't it require two public hearings?
Does.
Would it just not be close this one, have a second one?
I guess so.
Either way.
I think it could work.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's going to hold their hands to this one. All right. Well, I do have a motion and a second. Commissioner Lane, I believe I saw it hand raised.
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor of closing the public hearing this evening.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you very much. Okay, hopefully passes. Um, just so I can call for next item. Number four, PDSC staff announcements.
We just want to let the commission know that the mini corridors tool, which you voted on at your last first, at the last hearing and a public hearing. Um, and made a recommendation, Mayor Council, that will be going to Mayor Council next week, today, March eighth for a public hearing.
So we have another one of these. Yeah, the second public hearing is, I'm, what's the date on that?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
So that'll be March nineteenth, next week, Wednesday. And that's at the downtown council chambers.
Downtown.
At six o'clock.
Do we need to attend the mayor and council meeting on the eighteenth?
No, I just wanted to let the commission know for informational purposes that that is the next step on that item.
Good for a motion support.
Hold your, hold your calendar to account. All right, um, then I go ahead and call for item number five, future agenda items.
Just mentioned, but yeah, uh, Plan Tucson Public Hearing next week on Wednesday, March nineteenth, six o'clock, Mayor Council Chambers. You can also attend virtually if you'd like to.
Thank you. Uh, now go ahead and call item number six, call to the audience. I would like to offer the public any opportunity to speak on any subject not listed as a public hearing this evening. The current agenda. Anyone would like to speak, go ahead and please raise their hand. And seeing none, go ahead and call for item number seven, call to adjourn. Do I have a motion?
Giving these out at all.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
I.
Thank you very much.